Once, twice, three times, four times, whatever it takes and moving forward. We don't know where we are with which path we're on. We haven't hit the fork in the road yet. One of the items that they will look for some funding for is the North Stratfield roof. That is on the long-term plan. It's almost concurrent with the AC project, so that is something that an item that they would ask for money for.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Papa George, just to confirm what Mr. Morbidio just said, so that would be concurrent? It would be a separate project but concurrent with the AC?
We could treat it as separate. We would probably ask the building committee to take on that as additional services with their project currently going on so that we can get it done before. We don't want to put new equipment on a roof that has to be replaced the following year. Thank you.
Just can I ask a follow-up on that? Even if you use this ask to use the same building committee, it would still be a separate project with its own separate state application and...
Correct.
Okay, okay. So you're not looking to bundle this into... Okay, yeah, all right.
It's... Yeah, there's things to coordinate. There are three different projects, but they would have to... Since they're running simultaneously, you would want them coordinated together by the same construction manager and the same oversight, so same committee, so you're not tripping on each other.
Understood. The potential hiccup, so to speak, even with any such hiccup, we would still be able for installation next summer, correct?
Yes, that's what we're looking at.
Even with the built-in potential hiccup, it would still mean those schools would be on track to still get their AC next summer?
They would be working on the AC, whether it's a one-summer install or a two-summer install? That's a different question. You're talking about the timeline of the project?
I believe that next summer was when it was actually gonna put the equipment in and come fall, they would all have the AC.
Right. Once the project gets bid out, we'll know delivery schedules for all the major equipment. We'll have our vendors and we will pursue to work. So assuming that the equipment is deliverable within the timeframe, it'll be installed, then the timeline will be determined once we have all the pieces together. We don't have all of that yet.
Yeah, but just to be clear, Ms. Jacobson, I don't think there's a guarantee that after next summer, cold air will be flowing from the ducts in all of these schools. The project will be underway, correct, Mr. Morbidio?
Project would definitely be underway.
And then there are some potentials, as has been discussed in the building committee, about timing of getting certain components. So the project won't be slowed down, in essence. The work will still be continuing, but the idea that all three schools would be flowing cold air by the end of next summer is not necessarily a guarantee, correct?
That's probably not gonna... That's probably true. It's gonna be an ongoing process, whether we'll be working second shift for completion or waiting until the next summer to complete. That's what will have to be determined. And that goes into the price of the project and the length of the project. You buy the schedule. If you want it by a certain date, you have to get more bodies, gotta get the equipments expedited, things like that raises the cost. So not to put an artificial deadline on it, let the construction manager and the owner's rep work out the correct schedule for the project and bid to that.
I just remember from the bid that the projects were expected to be completed by the town by the end of December 2024, that that was the bid timeline.
Bidding most likely will be... The bidding will most likely be occurring in December with determining who the subcontractors are sometime in January and the contracts being taken care of and all that. The completion date that you're talking about is a completion date listed in the state And they... Once we have it all bid out and we know our schedule, we can go to them and say, "It's not gonna be done by the date that you gave us because we can't get this piece of equipment", so on and so forth. So they're open to give an extension on that date, that deadline date. That's for the grant. That's not for the construction.
Okay. Anyone else? Mrs. Vitale?
Hi, thank you for the information. Do you have any preliminary information, just in terms of lead time for equipment? I know that, you know, just thinking of the Tomlinson chiller and that's taking a lot longer to get in than we originally anticipated. You know, even if you have the staffing and the bids come back and everything is going on schedule, you know, if we don't get the equipment in time, that's gonna mess with the timeline as well. And it may be too soon to tell, being that you're still in design phase with everything, but just, you know, word on the street in terms of getting HVAC equipment, considering everybody's doing upgrades right now.
Yes, the whole grant, state grant skewed the whole economy on doing HVAC projects in the state of Connecticut. Everybody's chasing the same dollar. Everybody's chasing the same equipment. That being said, some pieces of equipment, for instance, we actually secured four grants out of the state HVAC fund. The fourth one is for Fairfield Ward, which is replacement of rooftop units. Those rooftop units have a 30 to 35-week lead time. That's a long time. We have a chiller, we have one chiller that we're replacing at Tomlinson that has a 55-week lead time. That will be done next summer. We ordered that back in February. Electrical switchgear, timelines we're getting on the streets now are anywhere from 11, 12, and 13 months. So seeing that we will have to upgrade electrical services, we've already made that determination and the engineer's working on it, has met with the utility company on those designs, right off the bat, you're looking at a contractor being hired in January and you got one year for the equipment to show up. Now, there's a lot of work you can do before that, but you're not tied into the electrical service.
Thank you for the additional information. Just in terms of timeline, I think it's important. I don't want to set an expectation that there's gonna be cold air in buildings because even if we, you know, get everybody lined up, it may be unfortunately another supply chain issue that we're looking at.
We're still looking at those effects, yes.
I just have one last question. Now that you mentioned the grant, I presume that the building committee or the powers that be would be spending down the grant dollars first and foremost before going into the remaining bonding capacity. Is that your plan, since that's money from the state versus our town bonding?
The owner's rep will be working with the purchasing department on how to spend down the money, so the first attack would be the escrow funds, as they should be.
Oh, sorry, Mrs. Gruber.
Yeah, I just, it looks like the chair of the committee had something he wanted to add to the conversation, so just wanted to give him a moment to get up to the table.
Hi, Jason Lamb, the chair of the committee. I've been in contact with Representative Leeper, giving her an update on what our challenges are. She has ensured me that the state grant and the state's well aware of the supply chain issues and we have to put our ducks in a row and submit the right paperwork. She doesn't foresee it being an issue, getting an extension once everything is laid in place because it's an industry-wide supply delay. There is one significant piece that's actually a year, year and a half away from being delivered to normal projects and we haven't placed our order yet, so that's where we're standing on.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on the AC? Ms. Raisin?
With regards to the other AC work in phases, I assume that we'll discuss that under item C.
Yeah. Okay, if there's nothing else on that, when we get to the waterfall, Mr. Papa George, we'll talk about the waterfall when we get to the waterfall. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, discussion on inventory of all classrooms and spaces at each elementary building for testing feasibility of scenarios presented to the board from SLAM. Again, Mr. Asa, if you want to give a little introduction to this item, what you were planning on discussing in facilities, and then I might ask Mr. Testane if he wants to give us any information that he has on this. And just as a reminder for the public, this was one of the items that came out of the July 20th meeting in looking at each of our classrooms and the buildings and ensuring that any of the scenarios that the board is considering specifically at this time for, and then a new one that we're anticipating, would actually fit within the spaces that we have. So that's kind of the background and context that I have at, Mr. Asa, if you want to go past July 20th.
There's nothing really more from that. The discussion was gonna be about that.
Mr. Testane?
Thank you. Well, as the summer has progressed and we've been working through some of the redistricting scenarios that were discussed, the possibility of how a 4B, as it's called, which will be presented to the board on August 29th meeting, we began to do some walkthroughs of buildings, looked at how classrooms are being utilized, looked at some of the demands that are facing some of our buildings in terms of classroom usage, and it became evident that in some of our discussions with SLAM, that we really have a few things that I think we need to take a deep breath, we need to look at more closely, because if we're going to do something and have to be back here in two years, or possibly sooner, based on the needs of the district in terms of programmatic space utilization, it will then cause more harm than good in the long run. So that being said, there are some things that I think need to be discussed. Number one, we talk a lot about the ECC. I think it's very clear for me and the staff that we have a model program over at Fairfield Ward High School that if we're going to have it in multiple locations or at least until a one-site ECC can be established, we want to replicate that program elsewhere. It doesn't seem to be sound practice if we have a program that we are acknowledging is working properly, students are being serviced, they're getting the support they need, and then other students don't have access to that and they have something that may not be as appropriate as the Ward site. So we kind of have this, as we discussed, either an investment in ECC or a major change in how we utilize certain buildings that currently exist, or a combination of both to some extent. And that basically comes down to what approach the board wants to take. Are we really going to look at facilities? As we talk about the 10-year waterfall, do we want to make any adjustments to that based on the needs of possibly investing into a project that is kicked out further down the road and prioritize that sooner so that we can address some of the ECC needs? I'll stop there at this point to see if we can get... Because then there's some other points just to bring up. But it's obvious, for example, walking some of our elementary school buildings, that they're full class, that are full classroom sizes, but they serve multiple purposes and that if we took a class offline to... Or put it back online for a section of an elementary grade, that the use of that would need to be somewhere in the building that currently doesn't exist. So for example, we take and we add a classroom at Jennings, then there is no longer a computer lab or there's no longer a steam room, or they're gonna have to squeeze and have a conference room, you know, in the principal's office. You know, special education students may have to be serviced in a hallway or in a stairwell. Well, they don't have a stairwell there, but you get my gist of what I'm trying to say, so.
I do. I just have a clarifying question for everyone before I open it up to the board. But all of those spaces were provided to SLAM as part of our inventory in November. They knew that there were other purposes being used for full classrooms. So was there more being used than they knew about or just... I guess I'm confused what the issue is.
Well, I think part of that, as you can see in the presentation by SLAM and the different scenarios, they're putting three classrooms of ECC at one location, three at another. So it's not replicating what's happening at Ward. It's kind of splitting it and then at the same time, needing to split the resources that provide support to those students that attend those programs.
Okay, sorry, I guess I'm confused again because didn't you work with SLAM on these scenarios and telling them where to place the programming?
Correct. And they placed them in the locations, but not to the extent of replicating what the district needs are. So as we tweak that or refine that, we're finding, for example, if we're gonna put a program at Jennings, we may be a classroom or two short because they put three there, not taking into consideration, you know, they're looking at the footprint as we provided to them, how many full-size classrooms there are, but not realizing that in one classroom, three special education teachers are servicing kids there throughout the day. The steam room, you know, the steam teacher would have to be on a cart, which is not ideal. You know, he would lose a computer lab. So I think these are some of the things, as we've been working through with them, we've brought to their attention. So I think that's gonna be reflected in our 4B, but at the same time, we're seeing sections that in some buildings, for example, at Jennings, a section that has popped up that was not factored in in the original forecast as well.
Okay, so just to clarify, despite the inventory capacity study from November, SLAM was not aware of all of the full-size classrooms being utilized in each of the buildings in order to develop these scenarios without going over classrooms? Is that what I'm hearing? Is that what I'm hearing?
So I think the important thing to point out is that the November study was based on information provided in September. So September's information was looked at and evaluated, and then that's where they come up with the utilization in November. What Mr. Testane is talking about is the new current, now that we're getting the new year rolling and we're starting to do this process again, we do every September, we look at the building utilization. For instance, as he mentioned, last year Jennings had two kindergarten classrooms. This year, there's three. So a room fell off the utilization availability list already for that. They've added a second CLC at Jennings this coming year, so another room has fallen off. So things have changed throughout last year and now we're getting the updated information because we've, I don't want to say took too long, but we've come to the end of that year and now we're starting to look at what's currently being used for an updated.
And the other thing I want to add, as we also face legislation that just changed and the need for more children to stay longer in preschool, that's going to put a strain on the needs of the district as well. And that was not known, obviously, back in September and November when SLAM was provided with all of the information that they've been working through. I can say through our working group, they're doing the best they can, but as we've come to the conclusion, there are many competing factors that we've placed on this redistricting. We've placed racial imbalance, we've placed programming, and we've placed building utilization. And as, you know, as we said, as you tug on one, it pulls from the other.
Mr. Peterson?
Let me see if I understand the kernel of what you're saying. You, with the ECC, you believe there needs to be a critical mass of classrooms in order to duplicate the model that we have at Ward and that three is not enough of a critical mass to do that?
Excuse me, correct. Five is ideal.
All right. So, and that's the fundamental chunk when it comes to, you're talking about Jennings, putting five classrooms in Jennings, and what gets displaced from that?
Correct. So we can't, we do have some flexibility. We can move the CLCs out of Jennings. There are two CLC classrooms there that we could put at another building that has space, say Dwight, we'll just throw it out there. But then what else comes off the table is what, when we physically go and walk the building with the principal, ask questions as to what is here and what is there, it becomes evident that other things will be sacrificed in order to accomplish this with...
We've always known that principals will use whatever space their building affords them. We've known that forever. And there's very few rooms that are mothballed, that are locked off. I mean, I asked you about the science room at Stratfield, and I think that was the one thing that you came back and said is not being used at all. How did we... All right, I guess two questions. How did we not know what the individual rooms were being used for until we walked the classrooms? And does this raise the issue of standardization of experience across elementary schools if some schools, as we know, have a lot more space for principals to use for various types of programming and other schools do not?
Well, I think it lends the question as to why we're possibly talking about this tonight. Does a construction project get moved up the priority list in order to accomplish what we need to accomplish? Or do we look at a different approach to the redistricting? And I mean, that's a whole nother ball of wax, but I just think that...
Do you have a proposal?
Yeah, we can...
All right, I'm just, we're talking about moving up... We are on a tight, tight, tight timeline here.
We're gonna get to the waterfall, Mr. Peterson. I just wanted to get...
I'm happy to step back and...
On this inventory for a second. Circling back to Jennings, they had already placed five classrooms of programming in that building in scenario four. So the anticipation was five classrooms of programming in scenario four. So we already knew that they had four other purposes. It was gonna become a two-section elementary school in scenario four, so I don't understand why it doesn't actually fit there, no, with what we're planning.
So it could become a two-section elementary school, but that means students will have to be removed and that's part of the refinement in order to get... Because right now, there's two sec... Three sections in kindergarten for the current year and three sections, don't quote me on it either, in grade four.
Enrollment projection changed for that particular school, which changed the number of classrooms they needed and therefore the five currently would not fit.
That and the fact that if we're gonna put ECC there, they need to be clustered together so that they can... Five programs, five classes for programming, whether it's three ECC, two CLC, they don't necessarily need to be clustered together. The CLC could be located where the upper grades are, for example, the fourth and fifth grade wing and not in the other classrooms that have bathrooms and toilets that are appropriate for little ones.
Okay, do we actually have, Mr. Papa George, do we actually have an updated inventory with the other purpose for 1 through 291, what every single one of those rooms is being used for as per, I guess, the 22, 23, 24 school year? I thought that we had that last November.
So we had, last November, we had September's layouts. This year, we're working on getting them. We've received approximately four out of the 11, so we have a few more coming in still.
Have the 22, 23, though?
I do not have them with me, but we do have 22, 23.
For all 291, whether it's a conference room, a CLC, a K5, whatever it may be, you do have that?
Correct. That's what was provided to SLAM.
But what we got did not specify what the rooms were. It just said other purposes. Do you have the actual specific other purposes?
We do. We have, every year, we send them out to the principals and they take the layout of the school and handwrite in or type in what each room is used for, for that year.
Okay. Mr. Testane, do you think it'd be possible if that could be sent to the board?
Last year?
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you. Any, Mrs. Max and Kelly?
Through the chair, Mr. Papa George. We've only had five of the 11 elementary schools have an unexpected increase in sections. We've had a couple that were reduced, which I hardly think is a problem considering this conversation. So doesn't, with the other schools, shouldn't we be going by what they did last year? Shouldn't that be very easy information that we should already have and principals shouldn't be holding? I mean, I'll just say, I don't understand why we don't have that information as part of this discussion tonight in whatever rough form. These numbers are pretty close to being exactly what were predicted, so that means they knew what their rooms were gonna be needed. And if they'd been having staff discussion on, "We want to change a purpose of a room", I have a feeling that conversation didn't take place in July and August. So I guess I'm a little bit unclear still on the delay.
So those conversations, like you said, happen now as teachers are setting up their rooms, if they're moving, if a principal is deciding they're gonna move, shift people around. We could have provided the last September data for you, but we like to provide the most up-to-date available, and that's why we're working to get it out to you. The principals have a deadline, unfortunately, of tomorrow to get them back to us, so we would hopefully have them back to you and be able to get them out to you by the end of this week.
I actually, if that's possible, would still like to have 22, 23, because I'd like to see what that baseline was, if possible, please.
We can send you both, so you have...
Yes, you know, when it comes to this inventory, that's gonna be really important information to have. I presume SLAM has this information, but you know, the reality is, is that there's always gonna be a change and a need at a building for a more extra section here. That's why we have headroom. That's why we don't plan to 100% capacity. So to say, well, year to year, we might have to move five classrooms of programming, wouldn't be really great long-term planning because somebody needs a conference room or a steam room. We have to build all that in, in a thoughtful way for each of our buildings so that each of our curricular areas, our EdSpec rooms, our K5 sections, we still have headroom for population shifts, plus the programming. So it seems to me, I mean, and I've mentioned this before, it seems to me that this clustering is actually causing an issue because the buildings can't fit their curriculum needs plus whatever sections they're projected by SLAM to need, plus the clustering.
I think when you get the floor plan layouts, you'll see that any, the buildings, for instance, will use Holland Hill as, you know, received a renovation project, so there is some room for swing space in there. There's some additional spaces. There's smaller office spaces for independent work with students as opposed to using a full-size classroom, whereas you go back to a school like Jennings where we're using a full-size classroom for something that could be offered in a smaller office area if it was available.
Location and size, then. Bonnie, oh, sorry, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Kelly? Mrs. Vitale, go ahead, go ahead, hi.
Um, you know, I think this is, it's all so complicated, all thinking about what scenario 4B might look like, and I understand the, you know, the problem with the idea of, you know, clustering the ECC and what problems that's gonna cause, but I figured that that's probably what SLAM would be working on. And if it was a case where we would do a two-section Jennings and move the CLCs, that that would all sort of be built into something that SLAM would be able to figure out how to use the buildings properly. Also, you know, it's not a secret that I am a fan of a one-site ECC and I do advocate for keeping that program as small as possible, not spreading out locations all over the district. I don't think it's an effective piece of the program. I think the staff has made it pretty clear that that's not what they want, and if it can't, if it's not gonna be possible in this redistricting to have at least, you know, two sites and maybe three, then I think long-term, I would hope that this board or the future board will support a one-site ECC moving forward in the waterfall, if it's possible.
Mrs. Guernsey?
I have a question about the clustering of the ECC, and I'm just trying to understand, like, what the differential, like, what are the economies of scale between three classrooms and five classrooms? Like, what is it that is making that this optimal choice that would drive the clustering?
Rob Mancusi, Executive Director of Special Education. I think we've tried to impress upon the board that if we have one site versus multiple sites, we would want, we would ask that we be able to provide the same continuum of services at site A. at Site A versus Site B. We have a couple of challenges that we're facing that make this a little bit more difficult with, as Mr. Testane said, with the change in the legislation, the delay in kindergarten entrance age. We know that there's at least 40 kids that we know about right now that would be going to kindergarten next year that will be staying at the ECC. We also know that our student with disability to non-disabled peer ratio is 75 student percent, student with disabilities to 25% you know, non-disabled peers. We want to get to 50-50. We also know that we hear from our colleagues in kindergarten that a lot of ECC students or preschool students are coming to kindergarten, and they're requiring a lot of support. And I think that is part of the reason why the legislation changed. So we're trying to look at how we can have kids more prepared or better prepared for kindergarten, and that's where the concept of full-day four-year-old programming came into effect. But that's where the concept of clusters is, so we can offer the same continuum of services, whether you're in Site A, Site B, or Site C.
So, thank you. I just, I guess I'm still not understanding, because, okay, so just taking this a step back, when we initially embarked on this redistricting journey, I never understood that there must be one site for an ECC. I did not see that as a driver. I still actually don't see that, and when we start talking about three versus five, I don't understand the difference. So why is it so critical that we need to have five versus three clustered together, knowing that we, it looks like we would be displacing entire communities to do that? I, I just, I'm trying, I'm having trouble figuring out how I can prioritize that if I don't understand what is driving five versus three versus four versus two. I just, thanks.
If we're going to improve our student ratio and get to that 50-50 ratio, and you know, we've been listening to our kindergarten colleagues for years, who said a lot of the ECC kids come to kindergarten and need a lot of support. That's where the concept of full-day programming came into effect. So with that, we would need more classrooms, because we would be offering less sections.
I might need to take this offline, because I still don't understand. I understand the need for more classrooms, but I don't understand why they need to be clustered in a certain way, what economies of scale are provided by that specifically. I just don't understand it. And I do understand that we're trying to grow the program, and we need to increase the number of classrooms in total, but it's because we've never talked about this need to cluster in a very specific way until today. So I just want to understand that.
The ideal setup would be two classrooms for three-year-olds, two for four-year-olds, and a CLC. And with that, there would be five classrooms, and then some space, obviously, for the OT, PT, school psychs, and those, and speech and language pathologists to work with those students that they are servicing and supporting. And again, that is all coming from going out, meeting with folks, taking a look at the buildings, making sure that the space is ideal. It can happen. Again, we can do it at two sites, Ward and another site, but as this continues to grow, as more and more kids, as Rob said, 41 kids is, those are, that's another whole school population or another cluster of kids that will need to service in 24, 25, would normally be going to one of 11 elementary schools. So again, if then there's a third site, and we're not even talking about full-day programming, if we want to add some full-day program, especially for those older four-year-olds that we can probably, and would like, parents would love to have in a full-day program at some point, to get them ready for kindergarten, we're going to need space. So that's what I'm saying. I think it's, it's really about either a major change in how we use facilities, or it's an investment in a facility, whether it be a standalone building or in addition on to one of the two elementary schools that are on, on target for a renovation.
Okay, so just to back up to our charge, what we approved was five additional ECC classrooms on top of the four that we already have. So all we approved was five more. So these five that we approved in the charge is what you want to place together in one site?
We currently have six classrooms at the Ward site, and we have four classrooms at the-
Just talking about in our elementary schools, we have four, and we approved five more.
We're not even talking about the five new ones. We're talking about moving the Stratfield ones, because according to SLAM, they need that space in order to get the racial imbalance done. So that's where it comes into, they need to get kids out of McKinley, but they need to also get kids into McKinley, if we're going to get the racial imbalance numbers in, in ideal number or percentage.
Right, so you're looking for a home for nine new ECC classrooms in our elementary schools?
Eventually nine, if we, we'll start with five.
And you talk about the phase in?
Correct. And that's why we're here, talking about the waterfall in facilities, because it's become evident that we need space, and it'll be helpful as to how we're going to continue with working with SLAM. It's evident, talking with them and having these meetings and conversations, that traditional redistricting will not accomplish the racial imbalance numbers that over time we'll be able to withstand. Very, it's evident. There's, there's not a traditional redistricting scenario that we've talked about where we're going to get that number much lower than 23%.
Also, and just in, from terms of the inventory and the scenarios for four, which is what we moved in, in waiting for four B, there was also six programmings, I believe, at North Stratfield scenario. So what's going on with those six classrooms? Meaning, that scenario already had very high clustered programming. And in your walkthroughs or in going through this new inventory, I guess I'm trying to get to the conclusion here, that you realized you don't have the rooms in those buildings? Is that, can we just simplify it and say that that's what it is?
So in order to make those classrooms available at North Stratfield, it entails moving a significant number of children out, which, as we know, we'd rather not have to do unnecessarily to move all those kids out, where we do have close to enough space in a different location. So it's really about how many kids we want to move and how many kids and where we want to move them.
I'm hearing that the clustering is more of a concern for the ECC than it is for the CLCs, the ELA, and the TLC, then?
Well, the ELA, we have some spaces. We don't have the limitations we do. We don't have to have a bathroom. We don't have to have air conditioning. We don't have to have ground floor. We don't need a playground. So the, though the early literacy academy can be moved to pretty much any building, the CLCs, we can move around as well. The ECC is where we have a lot more constraints.
Thank you, that's helpful. So Max and Canelli?
Few questions. First, Mrs. Jacobson, I just want to follow up on what you said, that you, you said that we told SLAM only five ECC classrooms?
Five additional.
Right. Okay, all right, I didn't hear the word additional, I said, no, I know it was nine, so, all right, thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Mancusi, just, first of all, in terms of that 75, 25 ratio, what are we doing to advertise? Because I haven't seen anything online or on the limited social media that I'm on, but how are we reaching out to these peers? Because I would also think this is a time of year, people just moving in, they're going to be shut out of any of our local private preschools. Just wondering what we're doing to advertise?
Working with Rachel Chappa to get some information out through the social media. The registration information is on the website. We are having a lot of turnover with peers that were offered spots and are withdrawing, so the peer enrollment is changing on a day-to-day, hour-to-hour basis right now.
Okay, but again, obviously, school's starting next week, and have we been advertising any, because I, if you're new to town, you won't even know that this exists as an option.
So school is starting next week, but it's, our enrollment is rolling, so it is always changing. Some kids are enrolled, but will be starting as they turn three.
We will take a look at how we are recruiting, and we have some ideas how we can attract and maintain a higher percentage of non-disabled peers.
I mean, I just, obviously, feel the need to point out, we're about to make a significant investment, because we support what you are asking for, which is that 50-50 ratio, but if we don't advertise, it's, we're not going to meet it, and what you're telling us is that our students will be adversely affected. I'm just saying, I think it needs to be-
I think as a leadership team, we have to look at how we attract, attract non-disabled peers, because I think there are some districts that have waiting lists, but the, the way, the strategy they use to attract is a little bit different. So I, that's why I say we're going to take a look at how we attract.
We're on a waiting list for the morning. This year, it's the afternoon spots that we're finding challenging to fill, which is why we want to look at that full-day option for fours, if we have the space for that. It's also an equity issue for some of our peers that are on free and reduced tuition, that thought they were going to a free kindergarten program, that next year, that now do not have that option based on age, unless they do the, sort of, the opt-out or opt-in provision in the legislation.
But also, didn't we kind of commit to full-day for fours back during the budget session? I know we were talking about it then, we didn't commit to that, but we didn't object to it either?
It wasn't in our, the next year's budget. It came up as part of our redistricting conversation as a potential avenue for future years, but not for 23, 24.
Sure.
Sorry, just to piggyback on that, so are we saying that the morning, are we closer to a 50-50 ratio then, if we have a waiting list, and then the afternoon, we don't?
To start the year, there, yes, we have some classes that are at 50-50 or better, but we have a lot of PPTs scheduled, so.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, we usually have a 50-50 ratio on some of our sections to begin the year, but as kids are added. And then the afternoon is, is really the challenge to keep that ratio even close.
Sorry, Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, just, I'm sorry, I just wanted to follow up just on one comment Mr. Mancusi made. What do other district strategies look like?
They screen district, they screen students, they use a standardized screener to screen students who they, to identify positive peer role models, who have positive social skills, positive, like, strong language skills, that our students with disabilities could learn from. They don't charge, they offer free tuition, and they often have waiting lists.
And I guess one other question, too, so, and so these districts, do they, they also have one-site ECCs, or are they individual and in different, in each individual elementary school?
Well, I, I can tell you from personal experience, the district I came from, we had a one-site integrated preschool program. However, it was continuing to grow, and space was becoming a challenge as well.
But other districts that are doing screening, are they?
They, I, I don't know, you know, we visited many throughout this process, so they, I can't speak definitively if it's a, a one-site preschool versus a multiple-site preschool. They would probably, in my, in my guess, my best guess, if you're offering that kind of programming at no cost, you're going to have a waiting list at, whether you have one site or two sites or three sites.
Well, and two, I guess, and I also probably, I'm sure, depends on the size of the district too, but just knowing how large geographically our district is, and schools are spread out all over the place, and I am not saying that I'm looking to decentralize the ECC, but I could see an argument being made that, you know, if you have the chance to go to a preschool at your neighborhood elementary school, you might be able to attract more students, and perhaps in districts that have that, I just wondered if perhaps that was something that they saw as being a positive thing. You know, just because if, you know, if you are, you know, if you are in Southport, it might be quite a hike to go to Ward or Stratfield right now. And, and again, you know, perhaps it would be something if we could look to another school on the western side of town, perhaps, and I know, I know that we've been talking about this forever, but I, it just seems like if we are really trying to get that ratio, which I know is a very important aspect of the ECC, that, you know, there's, I just feel like there are a lot of other things that we can be doing, you know, like Mrs. Max and Canelli was talking about, you know, promoting more, and, you know, and perhaps the screening aspects, or just other things that we can do to try to do that, because obviously that is one of many important points that we're trying to accomplish in the ECC that we are not really accomplishing.
I just had a, I guess it's going to be a piggyback, piggyback. So, so to Mrs. Gerber's point, I, I get what she's saying. I think what we have to be cognizant of, though, is that ultimately, our focus is on servicing the, the children that need the services, and what is best for them, and then working off of that to grow our typical peers. So if that is a one or two-site versus at every elementary school, I would say that we need, our focus should be on the kids that need the services, that we must service, that will also save them the issues that may develop by non-early intervention, and the savings to the district by intervening early. So then figuring that out, and then I think the typical peer side should follow, and I would think the full-day option is going to be a game changer, if we can do that. And it, in any way, I think that has got to be done, but after we decide how we're going to service these kids.
I agree, Mr. Asa.
Mr. Testane, I wanted to make a point, I'll come back to you, because I know you're, you're on the floor.
So to Mr. Gerber's point, from personal experience, it came from a district that had a combination of both, spread out in many elementary schools for the non-disabled peers, and a concentrated building for students with disabilities. So with that, there was always a, still a struggle with the non-disabled peers in filling programming, despite full-day programming as the only option, not a half-day option. It kind of ebbs and flows for some based on cost, if there, because there was a sliding scale cost, and also because getting out earlier than, you know, when parents work, it's a lot easier to just leave the, the child at a babysitter for the entire day than have to worry about for student, parents that have hardships and worked late hours. So there's multiple approaches that are successful in some cases, but not ideal in this case, because we really would like to have the 50-50 ratio. I think it's a much better model.
Mrs. Max and Canelli?
Thank you. A couple of things. First of all, again, I don't think the screener is part of what is the advertising. I have no, no doubt that if it's free, that that's part of your advertising, but I didn't quite get the point of the screeners. But a couple of the points you raised, I just want to go back to, I know you expressed concern that you've got at least, at least 40 students that you know of right now, who now will not be enrolling in kindergarten. So two points about that. Doesn't that also therefore mean that they are not enrolling in kindergarten, so we're going to have undoubtedly at least one or two sections of rooms that are not going to be used in the district, because they're bound to be enough in one class? I mean, again, it's not a definite, I mean, it's interesting, if anyone wants to see why enrollment going down does not necessarily mean few, fewer sections, they should look at the August 11th Friday packet that the Board of Ed received, where we have a couple of schools where the enrollment went down, one by 10 to 15 students, and not only did it keep the same number of sections, it added a section. And so I just think that'd be really enlightening for a lot of people. But still, that 40 could very well translate into a couple of classrooms that aren't getting used, so to point that out. But secondly, I would strongly recommend, because parents are already expressing concern online, what am I going to do with my child? My child's an October baby, I was counting on them going into kindergarten. We could start advertising for that now, and start making plans for that now, and putting those parents' minds to rest of, hey, I'm all set, and I'm not going to have to pay another, and I don't know what the going rate is, I'm a little bit out of preschool at this point, but, you know, what the going rate is now for a, a third year or fourth year of preschool, we could really try to corner that market right now and get those all set. You know, we know 40, we want to get at least 40 kids advertised, no reason not to be starting on that early, but soapbox. on that early, um, but soapbox. I did want to go back to the comment, Mr. Mancusi, that you said that these ECC students entering kindergarten require a lot of support. And can you speak a little bit more, obviously globally, to the nature of that support, so we know what it is that we're not doing? And I, I want to give a couple of examples that would come to mind. Do we notice that the students who are at Stratfield transitioned better than the ones at Ward? I'm just giving examples, because they're actually already in a school, and therefore they transition more easily? Or is it that the transition period is difficult, and so that's something we have to look at? Is it skills they're not getting? Do you fault the ratio, that they're simply, while we're providing, as Mr. Peterson said, the support that their, you know, disability or disabilities call for, but they're not having that modeling? You know, so I guess I'm, I'm not seeing where, because our ECC is wonderful, I'm, be unequivocal about that, but where is it falling short, or what are the struggles that there's something we could do about it?
Well, what, what I would say, and you ask, make many good points and ask many good questions, um, we know that, you know, students learn from students, so, you know, we have peer role models for a reason, because students with disabilities learn from their non-disabled peers, um, through, through the way they model their language, they, the way they model social skills, they, they can share, they can listen better, um, so we've struggled with keeping that peer ratio where we want. In terms of kindergarten, the one thing we hear most often is that the demands in kindergarten are so great, so, you know, we get a lot of requests for additional power support for students from the ECC entering into kindergarten that they were not getting in the ECC, because just to the nature of the setup of preschool versus kindergarten, it's very different. But, um, in terms of being able to provide students with, you know, their specialized instruction on their goals and objectives, or whether it's OTPT speech, that we're able to do, uh, uh, at, no matter kindergarten or ECC, students still get all those services.
Mrs. Vitale.
Just to follow up on that, um, have you compared the two locations, just in terms of the request for additional power support? Is there any differential between Ward and Stratfield?
We're not really seeing a difference between, um, even where we have families that opt for a private preschool rather than going to kindergarten, it's, there's not fewer at Stratfield, and there are fewer classrooms, so we can't go number by number, but I'm not seeing, um, a difference in transitions, um, between the two sites. I, or, um, the challenges we're seeing with our, our preschoolers across the board, to accomplish everything that we want to accomplish in a two-and-a-half hour day with our four and five-year-olds, is becoming more and more challenging. The Board has invested in a literacy curriculum for us, we're, we're doing writing, the legislature has acknowledged that playtime is really important to our early learners, so to fit all of that in, the amount of time in centers, the literacy lessons, the small group, we've invested in the Bridges curriculum, so to really have time to do all of that at the level the kids need for practice, um, and that free playtime, we just need a longer day with our older students, both, both the peers and the children with IEPs.
As you both can imagine, I have a lot of thoughts on this, um, and I want to keep to the agenda, but I do, you know, I'm just going back to the, all of the work that we did five years ago, when we were talking about a site in the ECC, um, you know, the parent focus groups we had, I would be curious just to see the last five years, the peer ratio, where we are. You went and you did, you did visits at different districts, um, maybe revisit that work, um, and bring it back to the Board at a future date potentially, because things have changed, our curriculum has changed, you know, kids have gone through a pandemic. Um, I said at a past meeting, I think some market research of this, just this population in town, in terms of what they're looking for, Mrs. Gerber's point in terms of location, uh, I think it's more centralized location for our preschool programming could be a benefit in terms of attracting typical peers. Um, you know, when you have little ones at home, just getting everyone in the car and driving 25 minutes across town could make a difference. So I, I'm not making an assumption one way or the other, but I think that trying to get some real data on this would be helpful, um, for our planning. And I'm just coming back to the facilities aspect of it, I'm curious why Jennings, because when the Board did this work, you know, years ago, we had a rubric, and we came up with a list of schools, and Jennings was not on that list because of the physical space. Thank you.
Does anyone want to take that question? Mrs. Vitale, hang on one second, just give, answer Mrs. Vitale's question of the Jennings question.
Can you please ask the question again?
Well, we just, when we did this work, we had a rubric of what the space, you know, we, we needed for our preschoolers, we came up with, I lost my page, you know, a group of five schools, North Stratfield, Holland Hill, McKinley, Burr, um, and Jennings was not on the list because of this physical space at the time. And now it seems like we've decided that that's the school for the second location right now, and I'm just curious as to why that location was, if there was any particular reason aside from thinking that it was essentially located.
Yeah, and that's a good question, and, and honestly, I'm going to ask if I can answer that Tuesday night, so I can go back and look at my notes on what's changed. I know I, I've seen the rubric, um, I have not looked at the ratings of all the other schools initially when we did this, but I, I think, and this is why I'd like to look back at what I have, I, I think because, um, where we ended up, and going off memory right now, I think we landed at, because at the time, we, I think we landed at Holland Hill, Burr, and North Stratfield, is that correct?
Holland Hill, Burr, North Stratfield, McKinley, and.
Yeah, those top three, I, I think we landed at because they were newer, um, and, um, I, I think, I, I think primarily, they were newer and they had the bathrooms. And they had, I think, the space at the time, more space at the time.
Yeah, this was from December 2018, after examining all 11 elementary schools, the list was narrowed to five, McKinley, but they had space challenges, Stratfield, which is where it ended up, Burr, there were unique programming at that point, space challenging and logistics, that was a concern, Holland Hill, new space, staff capacity for more room, and North Stratfield because of the fresh air and air conditioning was a concern, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm still trying to understand why Jennings.
I, I can answer that Tuesday night, but you did trigger a memory, um, that part of the reason why Jennings may not have been recommended at that 2018 meeting, or, was because there was currently specialized programming in existence of, at Jennings, the, um, with the CLC that was there, and we were trying not to overload schools with specialized programs.
Okay. Mrs. Vitale?
Okay, thank, um, no, just sort of piggybacking on that thought from Ms. Vitale, in my mind, the reason that Jennings is on the table, or is up for discussion now, is because of redistricting, and because scenario one A, um, at one point, you know, was being considered by the Board, and Jennings was an ideal location for a one-site ECC with the layout, and it is a more centralized location to, you know, Ward, or Stratfield, um, for the rest of the town, but I do just want to get back, um, for a minute, when we talk about the ECC and a potential one-site, to really go back to the staff, because we have heard so many times, over so many years, the advocacy from our staff on, um, what they think is necessary to have the most effective intervention for these students, and that is one-site. So when we talk about why we would want to cluster classrooms, or what makes it more effective, the staff has been telling us that for years. It's about the efficacy of intervention, it's about the sharing ideas and strategies, it's about leveraging for staff shortages, it's about collaborating, it's about fostering the environment with the families, um, and it's about focusing on developmentally appropriate practices, and those things happen because they get to work together. And that's why I have been an advocate for a one-site ECC, or to have them in as few sites as possible, so we can give the staff what they need to make the most effective intervention for these students in the very short window, the very short, most effective window in their, um, development, developmental, um, appropriate practices throughout their time in K through 12. Uh, so, I just, I really want us to remember what the staff has said time and time again to this Board in the emails, and, you know, when they've come before us, because whether it's this Board or the next Board, um, they have done such tremendous work, and have such a tremendous impact on these children, and although I, I love the idea of, of having every neighborhood, you know, be able to attract typical peers, um, I have absolutely no doubt in my mind that we would have a waiting list for typical peers at a one-site location in town. I think, um, you know, my children went there when it was screened, and there was no tuition, and I don't, we didn't have a problem filling spots then. So, um, I just, I just want everyone to remember, uh, what the staff has so heavily advocated for over time.
Okay, I'm just going to ask one last question on this from the ECC, because I want to get back to the inventory. When you, um, Mr. Mancusi, when you talk about continuum of services at one-site, five-sites, whatever it may be, I conclude the implication to mean that that is not currently happening.
If, if we have equal space at each, each location, sometimes one-site, Ward will have, you know, Ward will, I don't want to misspeak, so if I misspeak, I'm just trying to go based on a lot of our conversations. You know, Ward's CLC might have more students than we would like. We like to keep our CLCs capped at 10, sometimes we're not able to do that, but, um, so i- if we have a cap at 10, and we have more classes, we're able to, we're just able to provide more flexible programming than if we have fewer classes. So the continuum of services we have now is half-day, double-session, half-day CLC, double-session CLC, itinerant services, um, that, you know, it's a fluid situation that they come and go. We do have, I, I, our itinerant services are solely, take place at Ward, is that correct? Um, so, i- if we were going to reconfigure, we would want to be able to offer the same type of service at whatever site the student is placed.
So, why don't we do that now?
We are doing that now with the two sites other than the itinerant service. The concern is if we had a location that did not have a CLC, in order to respond to student progress, so we may have a student that gets into the program, we work with them, we realize they need more intensive services. Or what happens more frequently is, after receiving CLC services, we're able to pull back and to move toward a less restrictive program, and move the child into an, um, integrated classroom case management. So if we didn't have that cluster of classes in a site, we would have to move a child based on their programming needs from one building to another.
Okay, so when you say continuum of services, you're talking about the integrated program plus the CLC plus the itinerant services. Every site that we have in ECC needs to have all three of those things? Even if it was 10 sites?
We would like to be able to, well, we would like to be able to offer the full spectrum of services at one site, at each site, yes.
At each site.
So we, so i- it would limit student movement, because like Kristen said, if we don't have a CLC at one preschool setting, and it would really, we would no longer have an early childhood center, we'd have preschools, like preschool programming throughout the district. But if we didn't have a CLC classroom in each of the sites, a student who needs that level of support would have to, would have to move.
Mrs. Vitale, follow up?
So that's really number one, is really having the CLC at both sites. The other, the itinerant services really could stay at Ward for the short term, most probably, in terms of what we're doing right now, you know, but the CLC, I could see that in terms of not wanting to be moving kids between two different locations. Okay.
In our first year at Stratfield, we had itinerant social skills at Stratfield, we have since moved it back to Ward just because of space issues at Stratfield.
Mrs. Max and Canelo.
Oh, just one quick, um, but when we're talking about continuum of services, that's within, in terms of the fluidity possibly of in and out, what about between gray, uh, ages three and four? How big a deal is it that those are in the same location? For example, if, okay, this is jumping a little bit ahead to the waterfall, but I thought it was germane to this, if we ended up with a three-year-old serviced at Ward with the double sessions, but if we did a renovation of, or we found a building where we put in, now we're asking for nine, but we, we also knew that that was not going to be the immediate need, but, so say we found a school that had nine extra classrooms, hypothetical, um, that we did three-year-olds at Ward, and then the nine-year-olds in their entirety in that one site, because that to me would, would sort of be the happy medium, but I could be completely wrong, and don't hesitate to tell me so, of, for the four-year-olds, and in this case, the four-year-olds through that September to October, uh, to December range, is that workable?
Three doesn't mean the beginning of the school year, three means when their birthday is. So, it's one thing to transition from, and that's why we've kept mixed-age classrooms for so long, is that the same teacher and staff is working with the child through the, you know, two to three years that they're in preschool. If, if, in the scenario you described, kids would have one teacher, set of paraprofessional service providers for whatever amount of time that their three-year-old year is for them, and then move to another building with all new staff for that four, four-to-five-year-old year, and then possibly have to transition again for kindergarten. So when we look at the clusters of having the three-year-old classes, and, you know, the half-day three, um, half-day three and four mixed, and four classes, they're just transitioning across the hall. They still have, or, you know, next door, so there's the ability for overlap to get to know that next year's teacher during the school year, and we would keep the same service providers, which is really important to have that same speech just through preschool, as much as we can maintain the same staff.
Your points and your questions are good ones, it would also, it would, like Kristen said, it would eliminate any possible three- and four-year-old groupings. Groupings, like mixed groups.
Thank you. Okay, so for the inventory, um, item, in summary, we're going to get the 22, 23 baseline for the 291, and we're going to get, um, what you have shortly thereafter for the 23, 24 school year.
Correct.
Okay, and when do you think you can get that to us?
I'm hoping to have it in your Friday packet for you.
Okay.
We have deadlines of tomorrow, but.
Okay. And Mrs. Max and Kelly?
But then separately, that also needs to get immediately to SLAM, in case they have in any way miscalculated with their building use for the scenario we're supposed to be getting imminently, correct?
If there's any major changes, we've been, you know, having these discussions up until today, so they're aware of a lot of the things that we're talking about, um, we've shared with them, um, as of about a week and a half ago, the enrollment at that moment that you all received, um, I think it was the, the August 11th, so they have that as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Sorry. Moving on to the Capitol waterfall update and discussion, Mr. Papa George, um, before we get started, um, realizing Mr. Asa had had, you know, some discussion planned for last week at his facilities meeting, so keeping that on here, but separating it out a little bit, so we can also get any updates, um, knowing the intersection of a few things. One, just an update, two, that we are heading back into the Capitol Plan Work Group starting next week, um, for getting, starting to get prepared for the Capitol Planning Workshop in the fall, I believe, with the Board of Finance, so giving the Board a chance to look at this. with the Board of Finance, so giving the board a chance to look at this holistically one more time since we looked at it in January last, and then to have some of these redistricting conversations and facility issues as well, as we prepare to get the new scenario and just circle back to our long-range planning on that. So, Mr. Papa George, did you want to kick us off with any type of updates besides the AC project that we already had earlier? Thank you.
Yes, so just briefly, so you guys know, what you're looking at is the waterfall that you received. Excuse me, sorry. You've already seen this waterfall. We have not made changes or updates to it. We are working as always to find two numbers on it, so we make adjustments as needed to it, but we did not make any changes to it over the summer like we have in the past. We felt it best to stay the course as is, based on the discussions of redistricting and what may be coming down the road. We do realize that there is going to be work ahead and with movement and projects moving around to make some room for other projects, but without getting to direction, we didn't want to just start pulling projects out of things and moving things around. So we decided to keep it as is and we will present it as is next week to the working group until we get further direction, and then at that time, we'll be ready to move and react.
Okay, thank you. And we have two backup documents. We have the waterfall, but we also have the cash flow, which is quite an important piece of this. It shows on an annual basis, the cash flows, that's important to the town to know where we are at. So when we go to capital planning workshop, Mr. Papa George, are we starting with the 2324 school year now, like 2223 is off and the new five-year plan would start 2324 through the 2728 year? Is that what our charge will be?
We are looking, so we are looking at the 2324 is the money that's approved, 2425 is what we would be asking for approval on moving forwards through the workshops this fall.
Everything in 2324 has been approved already.
That is correct. And one thing to keep in mind is even though the cash flow for the air conditioning phase one project is broken out over the three years, when we did talk to the boards and go before all the town bodies, the full project, the 21, roughly 21 million was approved, we will provide updates as we move through the project, but that full capital project was approved, non-capital project was approved for the total amount at the time because it was required for the grant applications.
Yeah, we'll get into specific projects in a second, just the overall broad picture. So 2425, just so the board knows and the public, is that's what we will be going for. And then for the town purposes, five years forward is what the capital planning working group tends to look at, right?
Yes.
Okay, so with that context, I don't know how you want to do this, Mr. Papa George, but should we just start at the top and go through these district-wide projects in case board members have any particular questions or anything? Go ahead, Mrs. Isa, how did you?
We've, are there any substantial changes since the last time we looked at this? As I mentioned, we have not made any changes for dates or anything on it yet, so that's, we're still holding project as we had, as we presented last.
So I think we've been through this a couple times, so I don't know if there's another approach you want to take on what we want to get.
Well, I mean, I think that, yeah, I think that in terms of the redistricting situation and our long-term range planning, when we talked about this in September and January, you know, we had put two elementary schools that haven't had their renovation out into a placeholder bucket, knowing that we had some big decisions to find some information out from SLAM on, could we operate with 10 schools or not? So they were moved out into the, into later years, which escalated their costs significantly. We also had ECC money in here, but not until 2829. So this is a discussion of the board to say, you know, based on where we're at, are there different priorities or changes that the board is looking to make? We didn't vote on this last time we met, just because we had so many open questions at that time, but now is the time for the board to start discussing, you know, all the projects on here that we have. Sorry, Mr. Isa.
So with regard to the ECC money, that is out beyond our five-year at this point, correct? Looking at this, yes. So, so in essence, that is, was pushed back as a placeholder, right? Knowing that we were going to be talking about redistricting and everything else?
Correct.
Okay, so that's not within the next five years that Mrs. Jacobson mentioned about the capital working group? So is, is what you're looking, I'm just trying to gauge, what we're looking for tonight is a sense of the board, are we good with this or are we looking to try and discuss changes? And are those, to the chair, five years or the whole thing?
I mean, I think that our board has typically always done a 10-year waterfall and we like to look at the 10 years. I think that for our board, I would like to keep to the 10-year as well, just knowing that for capital planning, it's only five years, but to be honest with you, for them too, if we have huge projects in year eight and nine, they're going to ask about those as well and want to know where the district is headed with those. And that question has come up before. Yes, we're looking at five years, but then you have all these big projects after that. So I just think it's time that now that we had some decisions and some information come back to us that we in fact can't do 10 elementary schools and seem to be even challenged and starting to talk about additions, which we did not have planned at all for any building on this waterfall, where we're headed.
One, one thing just to point, I'm sorry, one thing to point out is that, as you know, the working group has put the piece of the pie, if you will, at the 12.5 million for the Board of Education projects. So if you look at the cash flow worksheet, we have kept at least for the next five years at or below that 12.5.
I didn't bring that up yet, but we're actually significantly below, to the point where I'm a little concerned that we shouldn't be actually moving some things up. Because I believe, I was going from 23 to the five, or the 24 at five years out, and it came to 43 million and change, when really 12.5 was 62, which means 18 million sure over a five-year average, and that's probably not a good idea, right? Because there's contingency built in to each of the projects. Understand, things can change, numbers can change, and you're probably far more comfortable leaving a little bit, but also leaving 18 million on the table is probably not wise given the vast needs that we have across our facilities.
So as you said, prices are always changing daily, monthly, so we did leave a buffer in there. We also left a buffer in there for unexpected items such as boilers, roofs, repairs, that type of stuff, that we have to go to the town and say we need an emergency repair on. So we wanted to be comfortable that we could go to the town within that budget and say we do need to do an emergency repair, like I said, boiler, burner, rooftop units fail, something fails on us. So we have that in there, but as we approach that year, we can start looking at, is there something to move forwards for this coming year based on we're in good condition right now?
I hear you. I understand. I understand buffer. 10% of the total, you know, is a high buffer considering there's already 10% in each of the projects. So I'm just letting the board know that I'm a little uncomfortable with how much buffer you've built in, knowing that we have a lot of projects and it seems that some things could be moved up. Mrs. Max and Kelly.
I just think it'd be helpful for people who are just kind of tuning into this specific discussion, if anyone could explain the genesis of that 12.5, where that, what's the source of that designation?
I will let either Mr. Papa George or either Mr. Isa or Mrs. Vitale, since they were on the capital workshop planning group before I joined it, but from my understanding, it came from the administration at Downhall.
I don't want to speak. Well, I, I guess I'll do my best in that I think the idea was in looking at the long-term financial stability of the town and how much is acceptable to bond in an annual, in a year, the number, I believe, of 25 million, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Vitale, was, was chosen and split between the town and the Board of Ed. And that has to do with bond ratings and everything else, but that, that was the number that the finance department and the administration had come up with, and I believe also left a buffer for emergency repairs on both sides, if I'm correct, Mrs. Vitale?
That's about it. And WPCA, some money for that as well, as well as just money held in reserves for emergencies on both the town and the Board of Ed side. And that was the approach that the administration chose to take. I don't know if there's been any other discussions in the last year that's changed because I came off that working group last November.
So one quick follow-up, in terms of that 50-50 ratio, and this actually, I don't know the answer to, so I'm genuinely asking, is, we only bond for these type of long-term projects. In general, we haven't bonded for things like paving, we haven't bonded for things, for a variety of things, but what's the ratio of, in terms of, if we're talking mostly buildings, of the square footage owned by the, or allocated to the Board of Ed versus the square footage of buildings allocated to the town? And I don't know the answer to that.
That wasn't a metric that the capital working group discussed.
So it was just an arbitrary 50-50 split?
That was just, that was the approach, it just seemed to be.
I wouldn't say it was arbitrary because we can't speak to that. I can't speak to the why, you know, there was discussions, but the root cause, you'd have to go and dig a little deep and go back and watch some of those meetings. I believe there was discussions on that and why the number was chosen.
Well, and that was just a starting point of a 50-50 split, and then there was going to be discussion of the working group based on the needs of the school district and the needs of the town, that some years maybe the school district would be higher than 12.5, and that was, you know, input from all town bodies. But that was the starting point, and that's why the cash flow was also an important part of the equation, because it's not just the total amount that was approved, but how much each year was going to be actually spent.
Thank you.
If all, Mrs., when I had joined, that was one of my very first questions, is how is that distribution calculated in terms of, but I took more of a asset value, replacement value, insurance, condition of building, age of structure, has it been renovated, old, new, in terms of a more professionalized maintenance and care stance by building by building versus this type of, so I'm still curious about that, and I think it'll probably come up again. So thank you for the question.
At the time that it comes up, even if it's not an agenda item, is that something you would report back to us on through committee updates or a memo or anything like that? I just, I'm interested where that comes from. We've got a lot of buildings.
Sure.
And then we've got a lot of square footage, so I know what our needs are. I'm not versed and I'm not expert on the needs of the town. I do not for one second think that there aren't considerable needs as well, but I would just be interested in more information on that.
Like an official memo from the administration or the finance department of where that actually came from? Or, well, yeah, I'm not going to make up the answer, though.
No, 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 but you're saying that you're talking about bringing it up in conversation. I'm, that's the type of update I'm talking about, of I raised the issue and this was the feedback I got. That's as formal as I'm asking.
Yeah, I think she's asking more for like a committee or liaison report back from, from you on that. And one thing to point out, though, it's important to know too, on the town side, that they, they have other assets, as Mrs. Jacobson said, other things other than buildings, that they, they bond, you know, for things like, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Vitale, fire trucks, pump stations, and all sorts of other things, that we wouldn't necessarily have any.
Like equipment, so to speak.
Big dump trucks, you know, stuff like that.
And small dump trunks, too. All right, so back to this waterfall. Mrs. Vitale?
Are we asking questions about it? Just you brought up the North Stratfield roof and the timing of that. Right now, we have it, like the seed money in '24-'25 and the project being done '25-'26. Is that, does that need to be moved up so it aligns with the air conditioning? And is that something that maybe this board should just discuss before you go and meet with the town bodies, being that I know they're going to be looking at next year first and foremost?
It does need to be moved up. We're working to pull some numbers together now on that, working with the architects and engineers, so we can get a better number. And we were going to bring it in as, if there is an ask for additional cost for the air conditioning project, we would include that in that cost.
Mr. Isa.
Mrs. Vitale, is, are you, can I, okay. So with regard to the AC phases and some of the things, so this brings up a good point of having to potentially move up a roof project because of a coinciding air conditioning project. Now that we're diving into this, is our approach good? Meaning, we're right now got a report from Mr. Morbeto that, you know, they're in the schematic phase and doing all of that and getting the numbers. So a lot, we did a great job hiring the consultants and getting the engineering reports and everything, but that doesn't give us the true number. We're really getting the true numbers from what we're doing now. And in other projects we've done, and we've seen the seed money and work like that, the AC project isn't our traditional building project, right? It's not our traditional building renovation, but we know what comes. Would it be prudent to reallocate money on this waterfall in a way that we can do some of the work for phases two, three, and beyond now, knowing that prices will escalate, but to try and see if there's these unknowns or other things that we didn't think about? And if so, is that something that we should be looking to do before we go in front of the town bodies?
So I actually have a working document copy of this back at my office, and one of the things that we have looked at is pulling the seed money from all the additional phases up into this coming year so that we could get up to design documents so that we can get better estimating, better cost analysis on it. Obviously, as you know, excuse me, as you know, we escalate out, our waterfall is set up automatically, so as we use, move a project a year, it automatically escalates out. So, but yes, we do think that that could be a very valuable exercise to go through at this point. Again, I didn't want to bring it forth, I wanted to hear what your opinions were with projects and where they should lie, and if you felt that, for instance, as Mr. Testani mentioned, an addition possibly out of building could be, take priority now so that maybe we push an air conditioning phase three out and bring a building in. So I wanted to hear what your feedback was before we started moving things around.
So with regard to the AC project, let's just stick with that for now. I could go through a little bit, did you happen to calculate what pulling all that seed money would be for, for next year?
I don't have it with me.
I'm a little confused for next year because Tomlinson is next and it doesn't have any seed. We should be going for Tomlinson this year, right?
Tomlinson, we would be going for, for this year, but that 241 is the seed money listed in there. So it's a, it's a two-year project with the first year being the seed money in there. When you look at phase two, Tomlinson, it looks like it's broken out over three years. I'm looking at the waterfall, cash flow, I'm sorry.
Okay, because, so it's not, okay, that's what you're saying. On the waterfall, it's not shown that way. Okay, got it. Yep.
So what you're saying, though, is getting this done now, the schematics and the drawings would be the same three to five years from now. We would just be doing that now. That wouldn't change, that would have nothing to do, that would be being prepared, so when we're able to actually put numbers to it, we would know of the unknown and the different variations and whether you're going to go with this type of system or this type of system. All that has to be determined in that phase, right?
That's what we do now. So we're doing that for phase one now, so yes, it, it would not change dramatically, but there is always new technologies coming out, something new, so it could, that's why there is a fine line between being over-prepared for it and being prepared for it.
I'm just, I'm just a little nervous on the high school projects, because those are going to be big-ticket items.
I'm very nervous on that.
Not having that design phase done earlier than later really concerns me because to take any other projects, moving things around, that's just a whole lot of money. And, you know, I don't want to have a, I probably won't be on the board, but I don't want to have a $5 or $10 million surprise.
No, I agree with you on that, and that's one of the reasons I, like I said, I did put in my working document to pull those out and pull those forwards. Part of that as well, is part of your discussion, is possibly even taking the high schools and looking at them as a phased-in approach as opposed to just doing them over a three-year project. Maybe we break it out, for instance, and as, to your point, if there's, there's money left on the table, instead of looking at the high school as a whole project, maybe we look at them as partial projects getting to and at them as partial projects getting to an endpoint. For instance, Ward, we just did the cafeteria at Ward this last cycle, so now the air conditioning at Ward is, the cafeteria at Ward is now air-conditioned, the Fitzhouse area at Ward is air-conditioned, the music area at Ward is air-conditioned, main office and library areas are air-conditioned. Maybe we pull out, that type of school has two hallways per house, so maybe we can pull out a house section, do another area of the building, as we build through the building and still continue working on some of the other projects, as opposed to putting it as a lump sum, as you see there. Ward High School currently carries a $29 million price tag, so close to 30.
Wouldn't doing it that way, though, end up actually costing more money?
It could, but it would allow us to break it out and work through. So yes, I get what you're saying as well, it would end up costing more in the long run, but if the town or the bodies are going to keep us at a 12.5, and we have a $29 million project on the table, and then we want to start looking at...
Debate we've had before, versus, you know, faster, cheaper, but, long-term, but fuel higher, got it. All up, Mrs. Vitale?
I'm just thinking about the high schools as well, and in terms of if we are going to break it up, I would just say that the back of Ludlow High School, that third floor, which we know are some of the hottest classrooms in the district, I thought that you weren't sure that we would be able to break it up at that school. So I would support, you know, getting design earlier in order to answer that question. I'm hesitant about tearing apart schools piecemeal, but concerned about the cost, potentially if we think they're going to escalate due to supply chain issues, and also to Ms. Jacobson's point, that we have Dwight and Jennings, and potentially a renovation to add a centralized ECC, that I would like to see moved up if possible, because those schools have been, Jennings and Dwight have been waiting for a long time. I'm concerned about just, you know, the air quality in those buildings without having mechanical means of fresh air. I'd be hesitant just to put AC in an aging building, so I do think that that needs to be part of the discussion. But, you know, it's not ideal, because doing a piecemeal ends up, as we've learned, costing more money. But you can take this feedback back to the Capitol Planning Working Group next week, I guess.
Speaking for myself and everyone, you know, I think that our job really here is to prioritize, you know, what we need for our district, what our schools need, and take that to the town. And if it's still the same allocation and we need to break it up, we can make that decision at a future time, but I would hate to preempt our saying what is best and what we think is needed for each of our buildings, because we're trying to preempt allocations, so to speak, and fit it into bucket, and we can, I can say that that's what has to be done. But I don't want to present a not really true statement of need in a document in a priority order, because we're backing it versus, if we said, Mr. Papa George, would you do it in this order, or would you change the order if that wasn't an issue, right? We're kind of laying this out, money, versus necessarily what might be the greatest need, so to speak. Sorry, Mr. Asa?
I hear what you're saying, but we have a duty to bring forth our priorities, but we also have a fiduciary responsibility. And we can argue about whether it's 12.5 or 15 or $20 million, but at the end of the day, it is partly our responsibility to stay within a reasonable budget. And that doesn't just mean our operating budget, it means our capital planning budget. So I think the working group will be helpful in having these discussions, but I don't think it's a prudent move to come up with a priority list and say to the town, this is everything we need, you tell us what we can do and we'll tell us what we can't do, and then make it their fault. I think we have to be part of this, and I think that the Capitol Group will be helpful with this, but I think this is a team effort. And I don't think that the approach of coming up with, this is everything we need, and you tell us we can't afford it.
That's not what I was saying, everything that we need is...
And then that's what it sounds like, so that's what I just wanted to clarify.
I was talking more order and priority versus, this is everything that we need. We are telling them everything we need, it's a matter of order, right?
To a point, but we can't say that we want to move up two building projects and do an AC project in the next five years, and expect that that's a reasonable ask.
So back to this Tomlinson and phasing in, I don't think I would want to push out Tomlinson to get that, I mean, that's not a very large project, and should probably just keep that going, right?
No, I would, I would definitely keep, in my opinion, working on it, I would definitely keep phase one as is and phase two, which is Tomlinson, as is. That would complete all the elementaries, with the exception of Dwight and Jennings, and it would also complete all the middle schools. And then if I were to push out something, I would say push out the high schools and bring in one of the elementary schools as a project if we were looking to do that type of work.
Wouldn't, I think you said that you wanted to push up earlier the seed money for the high schools, so we could get the schematic designs at least?
Yes, so pulling the seed money out, yes, but I was talking project-wise, if we were trying to make room for a Jennings or a Dwight project, those are the two I would hold, I wouldn't hold the middle schools or the phase one.
Okay, thank you, sorry, Mr. Asa.
So to that point, just to be clear, in pie-in-the-sky world for you, you want all the seed money for all the phases now, so you can do all the schematic design now?
Yes, depending on what your, the discussion was with priority, I would probably make a change to the waterfall to bring the, bring the seed money forwards.
Well, I, for one, would support seeing how we could juggle that.
Not Tomlinson, though, we just clarified that.
All of them.
No, Tomlinson is moving forward as is.
I'm not talking about delaying anything, I'm talking about the seed money for the design, so moving every part of that phase for all the phases, trying to get that done now, including Tomlinson, and seeing how that looks on here and how that works, and what is the ripple effect of it?
Yes. Tomlinson is already slated for this year, so we would bring in the other phases into the Tomlinson asked.
So it looks to be about $6 million?
I believe that, roughly, yes.
Ish. Seed money is escalated as well on here?
Yes.
So it'll be less, because some of them are in the out years, so it might actually be less than that, okay, thank you. Okay. Anyone else have comments on just that aspect of pulling out the seed money up? Mrs. Kelly or Mrs. Vitale, anything on that for the AC projects? No? Okay. All right, thank you, that's helpful. Yep, Mr. Asa?
So if we're moving on to talking about other things on the waterfall, it's come up tonight, obviously, about potential for changing the scope of the projects that we've talked about for years with Jennings and/or Dwight. I guess my question is, let's start with Jennings, based on the proximity and the location. The original plan was to renovate, and I think, was it a small addition?
Very small, as needed addition, there, that current, I think what you're asking is, in the waterfall, that number would not, would not have included any type of addition or...
Understood. So from a practical standpoint, and a zoning standpoint, and conservation, and everything else that goes into additions, is there room on that site if this or a future board decided that they wanted to add to that project as an addition to make a home for the ECC?
I could not answer that tonight. I don't have charts and water and wetlands and...
So I think it's very important to be able to know those, that type of information if we're going to sit here and say we want to move something up. So two things, once, one, I think we need to see what SLAM comes back with next week. We talk about test fitting and fitting things in, I think that's going to be very important to analyze what they give us. But two, I think we're going to have to know, and I'm not talking about numbers, I'm talking about feasibility. So is it possible to expand the footprint of Jennings so that it would accommodate a one-site ECC? That would be very interesting to me, because that could also play for me personally into where I think that that should move up to, if it should move up.
When you say one-site ECC, can I ask for clarification, you're talking 15 additional classrooms?
I am talking about a one-site ECC.
So no more Ward?
Exactly.
So 15?
Whatever, whatever that comes up being by the time we get to this, but that's the number we have now, but if we're talking about actually building, yeah, it's probably going to be classroom, but it's also going to be specialized space and offices and, you know, so everything, it would be a new ed spec, ed spec different than what we're used to for a traditional elementary school, because it's a different setup. But yes, my, the idea would be, would we have room there to build this thing that we've hypothetically talked about since 2018?
Mr. Peterson?
Just to add to that, we would also need to consider traffic implications, especially Palm Drive is, you want to put two schools where one school is now, Palm Drive would be small.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Maxon, Kelly?
For the purposes of the public, just clarifying, when we're talking about a one-site ECC, we're talking about one-site ECC and elementary school. Great, I just, I want to be explicit.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not talking about repurposing a school, I'm talking about expanding a facility to include and incorporate whether it's attached or independent, but yes, yes, not changing Jennings from being an elementary, making it an elementary and one-site ECC.
Okay, Mr. Peterson?
Not to make this more complicated, but if we're going to go into that, you know, there are other school properties that we could probably consider for that. I mean, Osborne Hill has a large flat lot behind it, depending on how much you want to sacrifice of the, of the fields, I mean, we, that's a huge discussion right there, of building a whole new building. So I just, I'm, I'm very interested in it, but like, I don't want to, I don't want to just spitball this thing.
Mr. Peterson, just to your point, how we discussed it, if, as part of Jennings, you wouldn't need as much of a footprint of ground floor space necessarily, because you could move fourth and fifth grade classrooms on an added, on the added structure to a second floor as well. So I think that's why it would be important to look at through an architect and through the, all the other hoops you have to jump through.
I'm not at all voicing any opposition to that idea, but it's just like, we're just kind of coming up with that idea rather than going through a consultant to come up with ideas, and if we're, if we're considering this as a way forward, and I think that if repurposing Jennings is kind of off the table, we do need to consider this as an option. We need to do it in a more comprehensive format than what we're doing tonight. So I just want to make that point very clear.
Yeah, I share your concern, Mr. Peterson, and I just want to bring up this issue that, Mr. Asa, maybe you can help me out here, that if we're talking about a 15-classroom addition possibly, that's not currently within 1.5 million that we've been given, then you would be necessarily taking other things off in order, at other schools that they need in order to do that?
We would have to look, and yes, we would have to balance, and we would have to see, not necessarily taking them off, but moving things around, yeah, I mean, it's possible, but how are we going to know? I mean, so you want to talk about what's the, what's the priority of the board and the waterfall, well, it's multifaceted, it's not just as easy as saying, we want this here. There's lots of other things that go into it. So, you know, I think to Mr. Peterson's point, I think if this is something that this board wants to explore, this is a long-term work for us. It's not just a couple of meetings and we're going to say this is what we want to do. We have to know that we have the backing, that this is philosophically something that we want to do, and then to Mr. Peterson's point, be looking all around the district, and, you know, in the past, in 2018, we looked and we couldn't find, you know, existing buildings and other properties. We looked at, you know, former church schools, and we looked at town properties. Now we have Giant Steps, we have Walter Fitzgerald there, there's another building that, you know, that I think the town has expressed doing something with, but it's more than just, if we're going to move up Jennings, my point is, we need a more comprehensive plan if we're going to move any big projects up.
Right, because we had just talked about being very concerned about a $28 million AC project at Fairfield-Ludlow High School that they desperately need, but now we're not concerned about adding a 15-section...
Please don't say we're not concerned. That is not...
Or we're interested in pursuing that, so you're...
Idea, yes. How we get there and the feasibility is yet to be determined.
Not interested in pushing off other needs that schools have to do that, when I know that it actually fits in our footprint if we allocated classrooms differently, and that that's actually not necessary. So in order to fit, we have 291 classrooms that everything fits into, it just may not fit the way that maybe everyone would like it to fit. So if it comes with your philosophy of we can't ask for everything that we need, that would not be my priority or the things that the other schools need, fundamentally. Mrs. Guernsey?
Thank you for sharing that, and I would agree. I don't have a lot to add about this waterfall, because it's coming at a time that I'm finding it really difficult to look at this now. I'm happy to have this conversation, but I feel like it's like six months too late, because I don't want to see this driving redistricting, because we're talking about it now, but then it probably should, so then does that mean we're pocket redistricting to short-term solution it, which not totally opposed to at this point, given the new information that we have tonight? That just is bringing more questions than answers. And I would also add that I am still in the same mindset about the air conditioning, HVAC, mechanical means for fresh air needs across all of our high schools, and thank you, Mrs. Vitale, for talking about our high school needs, especially those oven classrooms on the third floor, and just like, I'd like to have a conversation where we're prioritizing those projects amongst each other, what are the greatest needs among those HVAC projects, rather than, I mean, we're expanding this conversation, and I guess I just, I don't see where this conversation is going tonight. I'm not sure what else I could add, and I mean, it's getting late, we could talk, I'm not sure where this is going.
Stoney, can I ask you a question? This idea of an addition at Jennings and bumping it up possibly, does that, is that like 10 years down the road, or is that part of the redistricting conversation?
Well, that was one of the things...
Because that's not happening in '24, '25?
No, so as, as we talked through a lot of this, and Mr. Papa George can attest to, it came to the, we've come to the conclusion that we could either, A, accept whatever SLAM presents, we have four, and whatever four B is going to look like, and hope that it accomplishes exactly what it intends to do, which is solve racial imbalance, which, as we saw in four, it really doesn't do that, increase our building utilization, which we had some issues with, I think, in some schools in some of the out years, or the other option was to take a multi-phase approach, which would be, A, one, solve racial imbalance, and then, two, utilization in ECC is the second part of that. So it's one or the other, but I think as we had the conversations with Patrick and Mike, the board really needs to decide on an approach, and which approach we want to take, because if not, we could be back here in a couple of years, and I, for one, don't think the town can stomach another talk about redistricting, and I personally don't think that's a great idea. If we've already moved kids, we can't move them again, so now we're going to move a whole nother group of kids, possibly, but if it's, if racial imbalance hasn't been solved, then what are we going to do? Move different kids at the same schools? So I'm really torn, because McKinley kids are going to be impacted, one way or another. In the traditional redistricting, according to the experts in this, and we got an illustration of this, more are going to be redistricted in a traditional redistricting philosophy than if we look at it in a more, as they use the term satellite. And I know that that was something taken off the table, but I don't know if we want to kind of maybe take a step back after the 29th, once you see four B, and see if that's something that people want to revisit, because again, it's still out there. I don't know that specific one, but I think we have to understand, and I'm very clear on this, that this may need to be a multi-phase approach, rather than rip the Band-Aid off and then we don't accomplish anything, and we move the heck of a lot of kids for no reason.
So when you say multi-phase approach, you're talking about a phase one, smaller redistricting to resolve racial imbalance for the '24, '25 school year, pausing all the rest of it and getting a long-term plan, is that what you're suggesting?
No, I don't know if it's a small approach, they will give us what will solve racial imbalance to a level that we won't creep back up, because in all the traditional redistricting scenarios they run, it seems that we don't really get lower than 22%. And that is not a, we're going to move a bunch of kids and we don't really accomplish that much, the needle moves a little bit, I guess we can tell the state, hey, we did something, but where does... but where does that leave us in a couple of years? So what I'm saying a multi-phase approach is, we have competing interests, we have racial imbalance, we have utilization, and we have ECC. Let's solve racial imbalance, because that's why we're really here, first and foremost, because we've been forced to do something by the state and look at utilization in ECC, maybe in phase two. So that, it just becomes obvious, I don't know if you want to add a little bit to that, Angela.
No, as you said, I think it became very obvious that we're trying to pull from all different directions and something has to give back a little in order for it to pull. So a multi-year approach may be the best option.
Mrs. Guernsey.
I just want to add, as we go through this conversation, I'm thinking that I might also want to revisit a discussion around magnet schools, depending on what appears before us with this four B scenario. So I just bring that up to you as a, a possibility that I, I might want to bring up next week.
As a means to resolve racial imbalance?
Yes.
Mr. Asa.
I think it's just important for us to, to, to reset here and remember that this board decided to ask SLAM for a four B, and that is the next step. And anything else, and hypothetical, until we see that, I think should just be tabled and tamed, and that let's get our four B, let's look at it, and as we've said, many board members have said all along, if it doesn't make sense, then we will keep working on it. But if it's something that looks like it makes sense and maybe needs some further work, let's, let's get there. So I don't want to, I just don't want to jump ahead tonight, and, and I appreciate Mr. Testane's thoughts and, and his ideas, and I think those may or may not come into play depending on what we see next week, but without seeing that, we're blind. The public is blind, we're blind, and we know that. And that's, that's, I mean, it is what it is. So I think we just need to, to just reset, get to next week, hopefully get our, get our four B, and let's look and see what that looks like.
Absolutely.
After that, if it's not what we want, knowing no, nothing, no matter what we do, is going to be a silver bullet, let's just, let's pause here. I, I think we should just take a deep breath.
So yeah, next week we will do that, and we will continue the conversation on scenarios, and we give Mr. Testane a little bit more time to think about that. Yes, Mrs. Max and Kelly.
Just one quick follow-up, is it definite that we're getting this next week?
Yes, well, the 20, yes, so should have something officially either late tomorrow afternoon or Friday to provide to the board and the public for preparation, and a, a presentation of four B at Tuesday's meeting. We've placed it on the agenda, pretty much the first item on the agenda, because that would be the only way they would be able to provide the, the presentation if it was the first item on the agenda.
And just, when we get that four B, they'll be providing all the information that came with all the other scenarios, right? Like the utilization, the racial imbalance, the maps, the callouts, middle school, high school, all that stuff, right?
That's everything that we provided to them in our request, yes.
Awesome, thank you. Mr. Asa.
Just trying to think how to say this. Up to this point, we have not gotten materials like a four B ahead of the presentation, and the, the reason has been, if I understand it correctly, context. And in the context of the presentation, so will SLAM be at the 29th meeting, just to confirm, and they will be presenting, correct?
Correct. One, I believe, will be on WebEx and one will be in person.
Okay, so the only thing that I will just say cautionary, I don't need to say it to the board, because we all know, but to the public, if, if that information is given to both the public and the board, which it should be at the same time, I would say to please, as, as much as you'll want to react to it, to wait and get the context from the presentation. Doesn't mean it's going to change your mind or make you think, but I think it's very important, because a piece of paper and a PDF document that might be tons of pages doesn't have the context. So I think there'll be a discussion and, and whatnot, so that, that's just my only thing.
Talking about getting a bunch of emails after it's posted with the enclosure on, on the agenda over the weekend.
Emails, but it's just the angst and the anxiety and, and everything that it's going to, and, and the hypotheticals and the what-ifs that people are going to, to do, and including us probably in our heads, without hearing it from SLAM. So personally, I'd rather see it on the 29th, but if you're going to send it early, I, I, I may just.
Can I just, a little bit of caution, when we did that in June, Mr. Asa, then you didn't want to have a conversation on it because you needed time to process it, or like the board decided that it would be better after that presentation to take some time and then talk about it on June 27th, or a little bit more in a time crunch? And I just would, at least for the board, be able to come to that meeting with questions and not delay till the September 12th. That's my only difference between then and now.
And that's a good point.
Yeah.
It's a good point, and I just, I, I'm just going to say for me, I'll, I'll take it with a grain of salt, and, and we'll try and come up with questions to be prepared.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, do we know, will there this time be street lists for a four B?
No, there will not, not specific street lists. Again, I think same philosophy as prior, because the, the refinement process still needs to be completed.
Kind of running out of time, so I think is, is your philosophy that we would get four B, and if it's generally amendable to the board and we'd like to move forward with more information on it, then they would get the street lists for us soon thereafter?
Yeah, so I, I think, just based on what Mr. Asa said, I just want to be clear. I conveyed to SLAM that I would kind of tee up some of our discussions from our last couple of meetings tonight in saying everything that was said tonight. I am in no way saying one or the other, or which way to go, that is a complete board decision. I'm just saying what has been made clear, because I know SLAM has taken a little bit of heat in some of the public discussion, that an, an approach needs to be decided on, what some of the competing interests are, what's causing, as, as we both said, the tug on one string pulls from somewhere else, and the multi-phase approach was something, again, that could be a consideration of the board. So again, I am in no way, shape, or form giving my opinion, I just said I would relay some of our discussions within our working group sessions to make sure that I'm, we keep this at the forefront, that there are a lot of different things that need to be considered, rather than we just, you know, these are the scenarios and SLAM didn't do their job, because I think they are working extremely hard, the technology that I, they've demonstrated, they, that they utilize is quite advanced and, and very informative.
I just want to clarify, when you say decide upon the approach, because when we passed our charge, we had gone through this idea of a short-term solution and then taking more time on the rest of it, and that was not something that the board wanted to do. They wanted to get everything done once, figure it out, have to deal with this one time, that's where, that's the approach the board took when we passed the charge, yeah. Mr. Asa.
Yeah, and I agree with that, but as time has gone on, some, I'm not speaking, saying for me, but it, it's clear that some board members have, a, a, as we've gotten information back, potentially have different outlooks or change, you know, so I, I think, yes, we passed a charge, but to the point that we said from the beginning, if what we get back isn't feasible or doesn't work for the majority of the board, then we're going to have to still continue to refine. So, you know, it, it's important to know that, and, and that it's not just, four B comes out, and maybe it is great, and, and most of the board likes it, but if it's not, then it, then we're left with, we've eliminated everything. So.
Well, and I think just to, I think part of that was to make sure that it is, it's been made clear to us that as you try to solve one problem, you, you're not necessarily going to get the results that you're looking for with the other two. And if you try to then balance the other two, it may impact the other one. So I think that was the clear message that needed to be conveyed, because as they come here on Tuesday, that's what they're coming with. Here's the best approach, here's how it impacts racial imbalance, here's how it impacts utilization. It doesn't look like we're going to get everything all at once.
Agree with that summary. Mrs. Gerber.
And just to return back to the, the street list, because I've, I've asked about this a lot, I, I'm still not totally clear as to why it's shrouded in some sort of secrecy, because clearly the SLAM knows what the streets are, because that's how they're coming up with the numbers of kids who are being moved. The last time there was the district-wide redistricting, every time there was a new iteration of the plan, there were street lists. And I get that that causes a certain amount of angst, but getting maps where people are squinting at them and looking under microscopes to try to figure out if their street is in that green part or that blue part or whatever, I, I, I just, I'm, I mean, at some point we're going to have to get these lists. I don't understand why we haven't yet, and I just hope that we get them sooner than later, because, I mean, again, we keep talking, we're under this crunch, but it's almost September. I, I, I just, I'm not really understanding why that can't be provided.
I'll ask tomorrow. I, I think from what I'm assuming is that, would it make a difference which street, if it's moved north, south, east, or west by one? I, I think just the general philosophy is what is landed on by the board from having all these discussions, and then from there, a street could come, fall in or come out, so it, it brings unnecessary anxiety to, to maybe somebody who, once they refine it, may not be impacted, or somebody who thinks they're in the clear, and then all of a sudden that, their street is, is impacted, and then they weren't, and so I think they want to kind of give, have the board land on something first, prior to the refinement of exactly which roads. But that's just from our discussions, what I've gotten from them.
Yeah, that's how I understood as well, they didn't want to create angst within the community of, am I impacted, am I not, and if I wasn't last week, why am I this week?
Creates angst if they don't know, so we're dealing with angst, no matter what we do, right? So, Mrs. Max and Kelly.
Yeah, just to that point, I will say that up until now, I have completely agreed with not having the street maps. As much as I was also looking at the maps very closely and thinking about who lived where, I understood why. There was no point to that discussion if we were going to reject the scenario, period. I'm, I think still of that mind for September, for next Tuesday, however, to Mrs. Gerber's point, I think unless we look at that and say, you know, if we, if we, if there's an overall favorable vibe, I think the street maps need, just because the, the public has asked, and several board members have, I hadn't up until now, I still agree with that, but I do think now's the time, if, if we end up being overall favorable towards this.
I would agree, only to, if we're left with four and four B, and we're really having two things side by side, not that you're picking based on street lists, but as we look to that iterative process of what makes sense or what doesn't make sense, I think we need to get them definitely before the community conversation. I think that would be helpful, which is on September 5th, so.
Okay.
We can talk about that on the 29th, if that's, if they don't have them, or, or they're not prepared to have those on Tuesday, which they might not be, I don't know, I don't know what, I guess to Mrs. Gerber's point, they must have them because they have the callouts, that we would want those either that night or very short, that week.
Okay, we're scheduled to have a conversation tomorrow afternoon, I'll make that very clear.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry. Oh, Mrs. Guernsey, sorry.
Just one, one question, I'm wondering, in your conversations with SLAM, do you know that they have just one scenario for B, or is it possible that they would be providing us with more than one option within that?
No.
No, I mean, I, I'm being serious.
No, it's, no, I don't, one, yeah, no, it's one.
One best option for us, that's it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Something to compare to four.
Thank you.
And the others that you may want to revisit if you didn't like either one.
Thank you. Just, I want to get back to the waterfall really quickly. Mr. Papa George, is there anything else here that's, you know, less high-profile, boilers and roofs, or anything that you know of that might need to move in any way? I'm always concerned about those, and just want to make sure that they're still kind of in the right place warranty-wise and things like that, or condition-wise?
Condition-wise, we are evaluating right now, but we had, in this year, we have seed money for replacing the boilers at Sherman Elementary School. We are looking to, we, we would ask for the full funding upfront for that project, is what we're thinking the approach is going to have to take because of some concerns with one of the two boilers there.
That'd be another change then on the waterfall, just want to have a.
Correct.
When Mr. Asa and I go next week, have an idea of what we're talking about.
On the Sherman, there's nothing else other than that that I see, correct? That, that's anticipated?
Correct.
Okay, so no issue with the FEMA thresholds, which I think is closer to 3 million?
No.
Okay.
And I guess for the ECC money that's out here, I, to Mr. Asa's point, beyond the five years, but it's likely that no matter what we do, that's going to have to move up either as multiple sites and what it might need to be prepared for that, or off altogether if it becomes a separate project or something, right? That's something that will change, we just don't have any details yet, correct?
Correct, that is a, it's a very low placeholder number as well, just to keep in mind. I did inherit that number, and we've kind of left it in there, but we've moved it around a little, and based on what the decisions are, we will have to come up with refined numbers.
And just my last question, did we get reimbursement rates yet for 2324 for renovations versus the new builds for our town? Are they relatively the same as last year, do you know, or have we not gotten those yet?
I have not received them yet, that doesn't mean they're not out, I can look into it, I have not done that yet.
Just wondering if there was a big difference or not, just in terms of more money for the AC projects than we anticipated, right? About 800,000 total more, so that should help something on here as well, right?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Asa.
With regard to the ECC, if, if we, let's say hypothetically, get a four B, and that's what we move forward with, and that includes the, the ward and at least one other site, I guess this would be to Mr. Testane, would, would that, depending on the, the dollar amount of necessary work to get that done, would that potentially fall in our operating budget? And how, how does, how would that work? Because potentially, this, this money could come off of this capital waterfall, but because it would have to be spent next year before.
So, so that would all depend on where we landed. For instance, not that we talked about it tonight, but just scenario-wise, if we said we're going to move the ECC to Holland Hill, we're in very good shape there, because the building was just remodeled. If we say we're going to move to Jennings, then there is some work, we'd have to get some numbers together and price that out.
You say it's a small number on the placeholder, but it's almost a million dollars.
It is almost a million dollars, it's been moved out, so it's been escalated from its original number.
So, sorry, something to factor in is the location either comes with a cost or not, okay, sorry, anyone else? Anything else on the waterfall?
Okay.
Good question.
Sorry, Mrs. Testane.
Could you just refresh my memory for just the work that needs to be done at Osborne Hill as part of that renovation?
Which renovation?
Osborne, it's on, it's on the waterfall, for what work is outstanding there after the HVAC is done.
That was to enclose the walkway between the annex and the current building.
But not just that, I mean, that's a $6 million connector.
Six million dollars.
Now, there was a bunch of deficiencies with that building.
Like the small spaces, is that?
Small spaces, classroom redesigns, and the walkway. There was some, we did, we are completing the bathroom renovations this year, so that is.
Going to be pulled out of that? So I would just ask to look at that number and make sure there's no leftover HVAC in there, and to pull the bathrooms out.
I, I can pull some out, I wouldn't want to pull the bathrooms out, because there are individual bathrooms and office spaces in other areas.
Or just of what we've done this year?
Yes.
I mean, you kind of read my mind over there, because if we have money on the table, that was one of the ideas that I was thinking about in terms of maybe moving sooner, just because I feel like we could get that done within the capacity that we have. But if we move the AC, it might not fit, but the Osborne Hill was one of the projects that I felt we could scooch up a little bit if there was space. Just because they have a high population, they have, like, struggling with space there to meet kids' needs, and just in terms of the volume of small spaces that that building is actually missing, might be helpful as we look to other needs to get. is actually missing, might be helpful as we look to other needs to get another one of our buildings with appropriate spaces that they need to deliver their services.
Well, and just moving forward for Dwight and Jennings, I would want more detail on both of those. If we're talking about building a second story on Jennings, what that potentially would look like, when we spoke about Dwight, we talked about a rebuild, is that still what we're talking about? What would the cost be if we wanted to renovate like new for that building? Not that I'm necessarily advocating for that, but I think that we need that information, you know, in order to be making any real decisions about where they're going to fit on the waterfall. So we can talk about the facilities.
Yeah, I mean, I think Dwight was always thought to be new, because that was the plan, that's what they estimate, was it for a rebuild?
Well, and it was, and it was to build to a larger building. That estimate was to build it to a 504. So as we're talking about a location for a preschool, you know, I think that that number potentially could change if we're talking about a smaller building, or if we're talking about a 504, what potentially could go in there, and then there might be a saving someplace else. So there's definitely, you know, to Mr. Peterson's point about making some decisions tonight about these large projects, we need a lot more information. And in terms of the ECC, I would really, I'm just for myself, for, I don't know if I'll be on the board by that point, but I would just want more information from Mr. Mancusi and his department, and just in terms of what our preschool needs are going to be in the future, and what that program is going to look like, just from an educational standpoint.
Did your hand up? Oh, sorry. Okay. So just to clarify, as Mr. Asa and I go to Capitol Planning, we have, as potential changes on here, is moving up the NSS roof, pulling out the seed money for all of the AC projects, so we can get better design and schematics, possibly doing, moving up the Sherman boilers was the other one, and I think that was it.
That was it.
Okay. Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Yeah, because there's also a Tomlinson roof, but I don't know if that's the same part, but the Tomlinson roof is also out about four years. Is that also one that has to be reconsidered?
Because of the AC?
Right.
Because it's a partial AC project, not full, but does that...
That's what I was wondering, it may not be on the same part, I don't know.
We would look at that as part of the AC design work to see if it falls in like the North Stratfield one does.
So that kind of is going to be done imminently, obviously, since that's meant for the 24, 25 budget?
We would be starting that work, yes.
Going for the approvals for that Tomlinson project?
Yes.
Which may get expanded, you're saying, if we want to add the roof on to it?
Yes.
Okay, so that's good to know, thank you for asking that question. All right, so there was the three mentions, and then, you know, as of right now, the other things are still pending decisions and information. All right, that's very helpful. All right, everyone. Public comment. We'll take it to public comment now. If you would like to make public comment, if you can come up to the table, just reminder that you have to press the microphone and hold it down while you speak, please give your name and address, and Mrs. Guernsey, if you don't mind taking time. Sorry. On agenda items, yes. We have time.
Hello, David Krasnov, 155 Burr Street. I just want to say I'm a little disappointed in the entire redistricting process. I understand what went into it and why some things fell through the cracks, but for example, Dwight, again, was only mentioned very briefly by Ms. Vitale. All year, we've been talking about issues at Dwight, how it needs to be rebuilt, and we kept being told, oh, it's $58, $59 million, and, oh, we might be closing it, so why would we think about that? But we're now redistricting, and we've got two months to go before redistricting, and you have a project that you could easily do to help solve the redistricting plan? Just like Mr. Testani said, phasing a plan approach makes a lot of sense. Now, whether it's Dwight, or it's Jennings, or any school, why are we going to rush and move our kids like cattle, just to move them, and then not discuss what's in front of us, these projects that we have, whether it's adding to a school or building a brand-new school? Also, in terms of Dwight, I believe that $59 million was an inflated 504 school that was planned out in about 12 years. So the real number was about $30 million, plus funding from the state. Therefore, you could build a new school for about, around $23 million, give or take, depending on the size you'd want to build it for. It's something to at least look into when you're making this redistricting conversation. And I know you don't agree with me, Nick, and I see you saying you don't agree, but these were the numbers you gave me in a meeting, you know, I can't show the numbers. That may be wrong, and inflation may show different, but to not at least look at that before we do all this redistricting is a disservice to the entire community. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Paul Curtin, live on Arbor Drive. Fairfield educated my whole life, from North Stratfield, Fairfield Woods, Fairfield Ward, at the time Fairfield High. Also, want to express a little disappointment, and I want to ask a question about, you know, it's obvious sitting here, listening to everybody tonight, that you understand the impact that moving children has on them, and I'm sure that's been discussed at other meetings. Has it been discussed that these children in elementary school that have had disruption from COVID, and having their, you know, my daughter's kindergarten year canceled, you know, in March, and then starting remote first grade, and then kind of coming back in, and now potentially getting moved? I mean, this whole thing, I get the racial imbalance needing to be addressed, you know, from a state level, but has there been thought put in at the state level to delaying this past these elementary school children in their developmental years, having to deal with COVID and then having to be moved?
I'm sorry, thank you. Public comment isn't a back and forth, so there's no really questions and answers during public comment, we just listen to your public comment, but just, obviously, maybe the first time, and welcome. September 5th, there will be a back and forth, though, so, or you can also email, also just sorry, answer questions during public comment.
Okay.
But appreciate...
Fair enough.
Raise the question, of course.
When the meeting's had on Tuesday, please consider that, then, I'll just change my comment to that. That's about all I got.
Okay, is this working? Okay, hi, good evening, my name's Andy Cook, I live on 202 Alden Street.
Just speak into the microphone, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm here tonight to voice my strong disagreement to the current redistricting plan four. In the majority of scenario...
Sorry. Public comment is really only on the agenda items that are before us this evening, so the facilities waterfall, the AC projects, and the inventory, so not the scenarios themselves are not on our agenda, so public comment is just on agenda items for up to three minutes, and no answering of questions if that then clear, sorry. So we're not giving, taking public comment really on the scenarios tonight.
Okay, the two gentlemen before me were commenting on redistricting, but I can say this till September 5th, that's fine.
Well, it's more, yeah, I guess you're right, the COVID issue was, so, but it's okay. Go ahead, we have plenty of, go ahead.
The, my neighborhood is to the west of Reef Road, to the senior center, so in the current redistricting plan, we would be affected and go to Riverfield. If you are in your neighborhood and you will see countless lawn signs opposing the redistricting and current plan, if you knock on doors and speak with people directly, they'll tell you they don't want to do this, it's wildly unpopular, and generally don't agree that it's better than other minimally disruptive scenarios that were considered before four. Perhaps 4B does address this, that remains to be seen, so my hope is that the board will find another, better solution to this issue. Thank you.
Hi there, Katie Flynn, 204 Grandview Road. I guess after, I don't even know, years of watching this process, facilities committee meetings, Capitol planning groups, the assortment of, you know, redistricting conversations from 2019, watching videos going back to the early 2000s, I'm going to ask today, and this will loop into facilities, so no concerns, what is driving this process? Traditional redistricting will not work. We've heard that from SLAM, we've heard that from, tonight from Mr. Testani. You're talking about the most massive change for this district in almost two decades. What is the approach? Just tonight, we heard a lack of confidence in the current scenarios versus the classroom inventory. Talking about the inventory, to think that one child, in one section, in one building, made a plan infeasible. To make a plan, like, to carry the public with you, just not working. Why was the ELA ever clustered with the ECC? Was it discussed what that would impact on an elementary school? The need for more administration, the need for more substitutes, the need and educational impact on a reduced amount of sections for the academic experience of our students. If the focus is on the continuum of service of the ECC and those students, you should not be displacing another academic priority in this community, our neighborhood schools. I say this as the parent of two graduates of the ECC, and to speak to their experience, they started their journey at three at Ward. They were moved from Ward to the ECC at Stratfield. They left that program at four in March for the closure for COVID. They entered their kindergarten classroom at North Stratfield together, because they could not be separated because of fear of quarantines, the assortment. Enter first grade, we start at school, great, three sections. Within four days, they were increased to a fourth section, separating them from their peer groups and community. This year, second grade, North Stratfield, two days into their school year, they were reduced, one section, increasing their class sizes, and again, separating them from their peers. Hopefully, they will have one normal year this year in third grade. And then, if Plan Four is to go into effect, half of their school will be displaced, neighborhoods moved, without any confidence that we will not be back here again. Please, make sure we are centering children in this process, not efficiencies, not anything. The state is not requiring you to move anyone. That is a choice of this body. If there are other options that are presented that could help you give more time for long-term planning, please explore them, for our children and for this community.
Anyone else? Okay. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting, special meeting. Mr. Peterson, second please. Can I get a second? Mr. Asa, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously, I assume. Chrissy, Mrs. Kelly, you're voting yes on the adjournment? Unless you want to hang out? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for coming out.